At this time, call this special called meeting to order and would ask everyone to please stand and join us or invite you to and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. God, we just thank you for blessing us with another day. Thank you with our health and well-being. We'll just pray that you would watch over us and lead, guide, and direct us. Ask your forgiveness where we fail you. Help us to go forth and conduct the business as best we can, Lord, and pray that you would be in the midst of all of our decisions and that we would lean on you for wisdom and understanding. In Christ's name I pray. Amen. We do have an agenda before us and I think most of you are aware we have -- Donna has asked that we have a closed session legal. Are you still wanting to request that?
You probably should add personnel because it could touch on personnel, but it's primarily legal.
Okay. And I would offer to put that in as, I guess, as E and then F would be adjourned. Would make that modification if that's okay.
Make that motion.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, vote. Okay, moving right into the agenda. Item A, State's Award Jail Mills Contract. And I'm going to defer to Donna and let her state kind of what's happened, where we are, and...
It came to our attention that someone raised the issue that the request for bids was not advertised. I think the sheriff actually did above and beyond what the legislature ever would have thought by sending a representative to local restaurants to personally ask them to bid rather than advertising it in the paper and by electronic means and by posting it. So technically, he did not comply with the statute which says that where the contracts are to be let by political subdivision proposal shall be invited by advertisement in a newspaper having general circulation in the political subdivision or by electronic means or both. He didn't either. His was more of a personal touch, small-town overkill at this point got us into trouble. Therefore, it was not properly advertised. You cannot accept any of the bids as they are at this point. It has to go back out for a new request for proposals and it has to be advertised before you can entertain any proposal. As unfortunate as that may be, I know we all wanted to get this done, but that's where we are.
It has to be advertised for seven days or from the day the newspaper is printed or from the day that the bid is put out?
Advertisements for bidders required by this section shall appear at a time where at least seven full days shall elapse between the date on which the notice appears and the date on the opening of bids.
Who prepares the bid package this time? The county did not prepare the bid package, the sheriff's office did.
Actually, there was no bid package done, was there?
Actually, there was a bid package that the sheriff's department, the sheriff's office did prepare and I spoke with the sheriff yesterday and I asked if I could at least look at it before it gets sent out this time and then also the advertisement.
I would ask that the bid package include everybody bid the exact same way, not break it down into 18 different bids on one meal.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I thought you were saying you wanted them to keep their same bids, but no, they can't do that. But you, that is what was requested, is that they fill out the bid package as it was presented to them.
So everybody can be compared equally. The last bid package we had, most of them bid breakfast, lunch, dinner, and special diet. One bid multiple different ways and that makes it hard.
Well, all we can do is ask. They can turn in their bid however they deem necessary.
We can specify the minimum, we can't specify the maximum.
But you're right, you know.
We can specify the information that you want and then they choose to respond in the way that they choose to respond and then you respond in the way that you feel necessary at the end.
And you'll review the bid package before it goes out?
I requested the sheriff that I be allowed to review the bid package.
I request the same thing. What is advertising? What kind of advertising are we talking about?
I mean, the same as what we normally do for a legal ad in the classified section of the newspaper.
Newspaper. A print ad qualifies to meet the statute.
Yeah, that's exactly what it's asking for, is a newspaper having general circulation in the political subdivision. We have one.
I believe that recent legislation has also said that we could do the advertisement electronically.
It says in here, "or by electronic means or both," but the decision to advertise solely by electronic means, whether for particular contracts or generally for all contracts that are subject to this article, shall be approved by the governing board of the political subdivision of the state at its regular meeting of the board. So if it's something you want to do in the future, we need to have some decision by this board that you will accept electronic advertising, but you haven't yet done so. So at this point, I think you have to do the general newspaper and then if you want to pursue that in the future, we can do business before the board to allow that for future contracts.
I think we need to do both. Too many people don't have access to electronics.
So basically, we're looking at the first of August before we can bring this matter to a head because contracts have got to be, or the bids have got to be made. We've got to get it into paper for a minimum of seven days. If we get it into, we can't get it into paper today.
I mean, at a minimum, you would get it in next Wednesday. I think the paper's dated on Wednesdays or is it dated Thursdays? Wednesdays? Okay, so...
The paper's got to have it before then so that they can get it into the printer.
I think that we would need to have it in by Friday evening or Monday morning.
Run on Wednesday, the 17th and then the earliest big cutoff would be the 24th then.
So the joint meeting, the 29th, would be our first opportunity other than a special session?
Yes.
What do we need now? Do we need a motion to rescind all bids?
Yes.
I make that motion, sir.
A second.
I guess technically to reject all bids due to lack of advertising.
I make a motion that we reject all bids due to lack of advertisement.
There is a motion on the floor to reject all bids due to improper advertising.
Due to anything of the bidders themselves, but due to the error of the advertising.
Any further discussion?
Our hands are tied.
I mean, yeah, I don't, whatever the board wants to do. There's a lot can be done. Yeah, let's, any further discussion from the board? Let's, if not, all in favor of the motion, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, vote. And I, yes, I would at this time if the board's okay. I mean, I know action's been taken, but if anybody, if the board's okay with it, if anybody wishes to speak on the matter and share your frustrations, I share them with you. I really, really hate this has happened. It's not ideal. You know, I look back at how the vote went the other night and it was challenging, but as bad as things are right now, they could have been worse had we taken action and went through as it should and no one could have planned the actions Monday night to have happened that way or made them, you know, pre-planned them to happen that way. So on my part, you know, I apologize that law enforcement put this out and we, obviously, my approach is what can we do, what do we need to do as a county to ensure that going forward, all of our processes and our people who are involved in these are better informed in doing the right process and then making sure that we defer to manager and legal before anything goes out so that hopefully we don't have to go through this process again. So for that, I do apologize and that's all I know to say.
I have no problem with people speaking.
Well, anybody else?
I just wanted to submit an alternative viewpoint and a documentation to the board before that vote took place. Here is, this is a local government law bulletin. I'm on page two here. It says, "Local governments are not required to obtain competitive bids for purchase contracts worth less than $30,000, for construction or repair contracts worth less than $30,000, or for contracts that are not purchase contracts or construction or repair contracts." This is a service contract and it doesn't fall under any of those categories. And going back to page 11 of this law bulletin reiterates the point that there are no statutorily required procedures for contracts that do not involve purchases, construction, repair, architectural engineering surveying, or construction management at risk services, or guaranteed energy savings. So since there is, this is from, you know, UNC Local Government Bulletin and I believe the information to be accurate and I don't believe it aligns with what was just voted Basically, from the standpoint that if this is a service contract, then a formal bid process was not required, in which case the bid process that Sandra prepared was adequate since it's the way it's been done for the past six years.
I understand where you're coming from and I struggled with this for many hours yesterday. I consulted other attorneys in other counties. I consulted other county attorneys and every single one of them said, yes, this has to go out to bid.
On what grounds?
On 143-129 and 143-131. There was actually a group of counties that petitioned the legislature to make them exempt from 143-129 when it comes to specifically jail mill contracts and the state legislature allowed them to be exempt from the bidding process for those counties that were involved in that. We were not, so we are not exempt. And logic is that they wouldn't have been asking the legislature to be exempt from that statute had they not already been subject to that statute for jail mill contracts. And that's specifically what that statute's about. And I do apologize because I went round and round with this yesterday too, trying to find a way to let them go ahead and vote today.
A follow-up question to that would be, how is this process going to be in any realm as fair as it would have been the first go-around? You know, the bids have been unsealed. There are no advantages for anyone.
That means you can't change the bid.
Ella, I think it's a fair question.
I think it's a fair question.
That's what I struggle with. You know, it is not anything that's ideal at all and I, you know, I don't know the right answer to that. It's a good question.
Somebody answered.
But I know that, but as far as, you know, if I were in their shoes, and I've been in those shoes, bidding, not this particular one, but I've bid projects all my life and, you know, it worked. My sense here is it's way less than ideal and I'm sorry. But as, you know, the first part of this was messed up, but if we mess the tail end of it up, it's just going to get even, continue to get even worse. So, anyone else?
I'm not even a county resident. The, I guess, you know, it was an odd situation how everything happened and unfolded on Monday and I think, and again, it takes it to sometimes finding a mistake to make it correct, but as we've, as we're looking at this as a process that we need, since it has been sort of a hot-button issue on this, I think it would behoove the commissioners to go and actually do some due diligence on each of the businesses. So whatever bids do come in, if, you know, from Motley's to High Meadows, you know, ends up coming in or something like that, that it is important enough and we're seeing that it's important enough and has wide-ranging impacts across the county and to the community itself, that you take it upon yourselves to make sure you do due diligence to each of the locations, how they can set up, how they can store, how they can cook, what kind of staff and stuff like that. It's not just numbers because each, you know, as Garrison is a strong member of the community, the Hiddlemans are a strong member of the community, Gary and, I'm sorry, I don't know his name, the person that Crave that put in bids, they're strong members of the community that employ people that do good things, but making sure that something like this, particularly that it's going to be a three-year contract, so, you know, anyone else is locked out for a length of time, can they, would they, or will they make sure that any of their processes are in place or that are not in place at the moment? Can they create those processes and hire those people and get those things done prior to the beginning of the contract as well as fulfill that throughout that three-year contract? Because it does have implications if someone is awarded, no matter who it is, and can't fulfill if that is a detriment to somebody else's businesses. And I'm not saying it's right that any particular business should have all its eggs in the county's basket, but if it is detrimental to a business if they don't get this contract, that if the low bid does get the contract, then we're stuck in a situation that is irreparable for some potentially and that could have handled the contract if they had it. If they lose that contract and their business fails, then they're one less opportunity that we have. that we have. That's my piece.
Other comments?
I would make one suggestion that we recommend to the sheriff that a performance bond be included in the contract. It's not required, however, we can require it as local policy.
I suppose if there's other things you want included in this round, that now would be a good time to tell me so I can make sure those are in there.
Second, recommendation.
Certification from the Health Department, did they meet the requirements? Natural, we really can't say because that's going to be a reflection on their current business and doesn't reflect the business with the county, but I'm not comfortable with that. But I do think it is fair to, for certification from the Health Department that they would meet the health requirements to provide food for the jail.
Do you be satisfied with a copy of their sanitation rating because that would certify that...
My understanding from phone calls that I've received, emails, text messages, that there are separate requirements from the health inspector from the state for the jail, that one of the requirements that I am told is that there be storage facilities, refrigeration, and dry goods that be separate from the products that will be sold to the general public. I do not know if that is correct or not. If it is, we need to have that confirmed. I don't want to award a contract and suddenly we find that they won't meet a certain requirement required by the state of North Carolina and suddenly we've got more mud on our face and jumping through the hoops to redo the contract.
We can look into that a little bit further.
Excuse me?
We could certainly look into that requirement a little bit further before we do anything.
It's my understanding that this is a separate health inspection than the local.
True.
We need to verify that.
Well, but still, none of these places have yet, well, all, none but one have ever been required to do that, so I don't know that, I don't know how we can get them inspected if they're not yet doing it.
I may be speaking out of turn. I'm just, I could have smoke being blown my way, camouflage.
I'll look into the requirements.
I would appreciate that. And I would also, if someone is using subterfuge, I would like to be notified of that also.
As to the bond performance, it's not required by the state, but it's authorized under GS 144A, 26, 143 through 129 that may require, local boards may require that, if I'm reading it correctly. Table two, about halfway down. So it is within our...
I think it is. It's not required, but I think it is something you can request.
All right, we'll move along to item B. On the agenda, we have a request to, for surplus property to declare the old loader at the transfer station surplus.
Make a motion that we declare the old loader surplus property at this time, sir.
Second.
Motion in a second to declare the oldest loader a surplus property. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. All right, county manager comments? Commissioner comments?
I just think it, the rebid process takes away the whole concept of a bid process and there ain't no good way to fix it. I agree with that, but it, it's an unfair advantage, I think, for the sealed bid process. It takes the whole element out of it.
All right, we, at this time, we are being asked to go into closed session under attorney-client privilege, General Statute 143-318 dot 11 dot A dash 3, and also personnel. I'm not sure what that moved. Six, yeah. Dash six, have a motion.
Second.
In a second, all in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Five oh.